We're at the bewitching hour. Good evening, all of you. Tonight's the March 5 meeting of the Planet Commission in Newport Beach, in case you're in the wrong city. And we have a public hearing tonight that I'm just giving you an overview on the animal hospital expansion. So then we're having a great presentation on the General Plan Update Amendment Committee and all that. I'm sure nobody will be here but Jim. But we're looking forward to that one. So staff, call to order. We did it. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Request for continuances. Jim?
Mr. Chair, why don't we do the roll call first?
Yeah, but, okay, that's always important, I guess. I don't mind that. I always look down the line, everybody's here but one, and he called me in the traffic mark.
Oh, he'll be running a little late, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll have the record reflect all commissioners present, and when Mr. Rosine will mark it for the record when he gets here.
All right. Public comment section, you have three minutes after you put your name and address into the microphone, and about anything not on the agenda.
Chair Kitting, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. At four o'clock this afternoon, as is their normal custom, the city clerk posted the agenda for Tuesday's council meeting, and their main business item will be discussing the accessory dwelling unit ordinance which you reviewed at your last meeting. And if you still have any interest in that, I would recommend you look at the agenda packet for the council because it contains a new Appendix G, it's called. It's a very nice two-page summary showing how the staff-proposed accessory dwelling unit deviates from what happens in the no-action option, if we did nothing, what our rules are, actually what they have been since January 1st, what areas we have some leeway in, and how we're using that leeway. I think it's very informative, and it will make the ordinance clearer than it was at your last meeting, so.
Excuse me. Let the record know that Commissioner Rosine showed up.
Yes, it's called Appendix G, which is on page 81 of the staff report. So I recommend that, seems to be very well done. Thank you.
Wait a second. You said it's very well done?
The chart, I think it would have been very useful to have it at your meeting.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that clear. Seeing nobody else, we're going to go right into public hearings. Again, as you have all been, if you had not been here, with three minutes discussion, the applicants make a presentation, we ask questions of staff and everybody else, and then the public can speak. Item number two, Newport Animal Hospital Expansion, PA 2019-268.
Mr. Chair.
What do you want?
Can we go over the consent calendar for the minutes first?
You think I'm in a hurry? I can't wait to get the drone planned.
Well, we can't wait to get to it, too.
I beg your pardon. Okay. Minutes, February 20th, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits.
Chair will second it? All right, back to the.
The motion carries six, zero with Commissioner Kleinman abstaining.
All right, great. All right, now we're doing the public hearing. Animal Hospital, Newport Animal Hospital Expansion, 21159 Newport Coast Drive. Staff, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Chair Kitting. Good evening to the commissioners. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division. This is the Newport Animal Hospital Expansion. This project is the expansion of an existing animal hospital located in the Newport Coast Shopping Center, which is designated as neighborhood commercial in the general plan and PC 53 Newport Village Planned Community zoning. Surrounding uses include Newport Coast Commune Center, Newport Coast Elementary School, and residential uses. The existing animal hospital was approved by the Planet Commission in 2010. There are no animals served which are larger than the largest breed of dogs. Only critical patients are kept overnight, and there are no animal boarding services on site.
Mr. Lee, a little louder, please.
Oh, sorry. No animal boarding services on site. The hours of operation are from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays. The characteristics of the expansion are the exact same as the existing hospitals, so there's no changes to that. It's only for a change in size. So as you see, the existing animal hospital is 1,700 square feet approximately. They're running a little out of space, so they would like to expand over to the next suite, an additional 1,500 square feet, which would include additional treatment rooms, surgery rooms, and exam rooms, hopefully to keep the dogs happy. Total of 3,266 square feet for the entire use. Staff has analyzed parking for the site, and there is sufficient parking with an 18-space To address any animal nuisance issues, the conditions of approval have been carried over from the previous use permit, addressing sound abatement, maintenance of the building, and safe disposal of medical waste and gases. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the project, and to note that this use permit would supersede the previous use permit that was approved in 2010. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant, John Gianoni, is available as well.
Commissioners, questions of staff report. I have, the chair has a couple. I didn't see anything from the landlord on this. I assume they approved it since they.
Yes, thank you, Chair Kitting. There was a letter submitted by the City of Irvine that authorized this application.
County.
Irvine Company, oh, I'm sorry, Irvine Company. I apologize.
Okay. Are we still dealing with the county on this, or is it now the city? It's the city. That's been incorporated.
Yes, the entire Newport Coast area was annexed to the city in 2000. There is a unique sharing of land use authority in Newport Coast. The unbuilt tracts of homes are still reviewed and approved and implemented by the County of Orange, and then once they're done, they get transferred to the city for further custodianship, let's just say. So there is still that relationship. It's 20 years old, and it continues to this day.
So if their parking code is different than ours, we lean on theirs or ours?
In Newport Coast, it is a, it's actually the county code as memorialized in this planned community text, and so it's a hybrid of both of those, but it is not our straight city zoning code.
Thank you. Another question from the chair. Will there be overnight kennel?
There are only overnight kennels for critical patients only.
Not somebody wants to leave it there for a week to go somewhere?
No, there are no boarding services on site.
All right. And what about, have we heard from the adjacent tenant? Anybody in there concerned about this? I didn't see anything in my email.
No, there was no concerns from any adjacent tenants, and coenforcement has indicated there's been no issues throughout the years.
Thank you. Questions, or we'll go right into the hearing? All right, hearing none. Let's go to the applicant, please.
Thank you. My name is John Gianoni. I am the owner and medical director of Newport Animal Hospital at 21157 Newport Coast Drive at the Newport Coast Shopping Center. I came before the council 10 years ago. I don't know if any of you were here, I believe some were, and we approved of the hospital out of the need for having a community animal hospital in Newport Coast. It has done very well. I never expected that I would have to double my space, but as of today, we are close to 7,000 patients, 7,000 patients are in my care. I started by myself, I hired another doctor, and then I hired another doctor, and we have run out of space, much like a hospital would run out of beds. And so we are looking forward to making more doctor space, more treatment space, an additional surgical suite, and two more exam rooms, a dedicated break room for the staff, and the grooming services, which we have now, will have their own space as well. There's plenty of parking. We have had, never had any complaints with public or adjacent stores as well. So I am looking forward to making this expansion and offering Newport Coast even more services. Thank you.
Questions from the commission to the applicant? Done down there? I heard the staff said no animal services. What does that term mean?
I don't know what that means.
I think we were just referring to boarding services.
Oh.
Oh, I heard, I wrote down animal.
No, there's no boarding. The liability of boarding is not worth the trouble.
All right.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
I'll clarify one other thing, too, that it said for the overnight patients, if they're critical, they don't stay overnight, because there are many 24-hour, 24/7-hour critical care facilities located Campus Drive, Irvine, that we refer them out. If critical care is not, we do critical care during the day, but overnight, you need a doctor and technician onboard, so that, we don't offer that, and I don't think it's a good idea to have that in my hospital, at this time anyway, unless there's supervision.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's it for you?
Okay, thank you.
Open to the, they open mic to anybody else who has comment?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is David Tanner. I'd like to recommend you approve this project, and in fact, I'd like to recommend that staff reach out to this applicant and ask him what the city can do to help, because I think this is something that's really needed in the city, serves a very vital purpose. So I'd like to see this project approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing nobody else, let's close the hearing and go to the commission questions. Staff, do you have any comments?
No, we recommend approval with the findings and conditions in the report. The conditions are the same as they were back in 2010, and the applicant did agree to them at that time, and we, the applicant has reviewed the conditions and is ready to staff their acceptance.
All right, I'm looking for a woof-woof motion.
I'll bite.
You'll bite?
I'll make a motion to approve use permit, UP 2019-60.
A second. We have a woof-woof second? All in favor of the woof-woof motion?
Don't forget the cats.
Oh, where's my thingy? Well, there's nothing else to do tonight.
The motion carries unanimously. Woof.
Congratulations. I'm glad to hear you've done a great job in there without any complaints, because it is a good service, and there are more people with pets and stuff. All right, moving right along, we are now into a presentation by staff on the general plan update and procedure. This is under new business, so it's not a public hearing, but we'll listen to comments. Item number three, Annual General Plan Progress Report, PA 2007-195. There you go. Teed it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the annual progress report of the general plan and the housing element. This is a required report that's pursuant to state law. We do this every year. It's a slightly different format, and I have Melinda Whalen with us here to kind of go through the changes in the report. It has all the typical information that you've seen in years past, but she'll highlight some of the new information that's in there for you.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Melinda Whalen, Planning Division. So like Jim said, this is the annual progress report on implementation of the general plan and the housing element. This report is required by the state pursuant to certain guidelines. The reporting period is for the 2019 calendar year. This report format was updated to follow specific guidance from the Office of Planning Research in 2019. The report provides an overview of general plan implementation highlights for the year with a detailed status on every program provided in Appendix A, or every general plan implementation program, and it includes an overview of the required data collected regarding housing statistics. Appendix B provides a detailed status on each housing element program. The report provides analysis on the degree to which the city's existing general plan complies with criteria identified in OPR's general plan guidelines as presented in the DIA and BATIA memo in Appendix C. The report also summarizes priorities of land use decision-making in 2019. So an obvious highlight was the initiation of the general plan review and update in 2019. A steering committee guided an open public outreach process called the Listen and Learn. The DIA and BATIA memo in Appendix C was provided during this process to outline the degree to which the existing general plan complies with OPR guidelines and what will be required to be updated. Around the same time, the city was within the regional housing needs assessment methodology process. This process concluded a huge increase in housing units required for the city for the next RENA cycle and housing element update in response to the housing crisis identified by the state. The DIA-BATIA memo and the extreme increase in housing requirements led to a refocused general plan update. The city council dissolved the steering committee while creating a new Housing Element Update Advisory Committee. The first meeting will be on March 25, 2020. So another highlight is the updated public databases on the city's website. The first is the Charter Section 423, Statistical Area Tracking Tables. The public has access to click on any statistical area to get the up-to-date information on general plan amendments. And there's also a Transfer of Development Tracking Tables webpage, and this, I'll go back one. This provides a detailed transfer of development information by clicking on the different anomaly areas, and it also includes a map of the area and information. Moving out to the housing element portion, this highlights data reported in the larger Excel tables that are too large to print, but that are provided through a link in the report. These required reporting forms are provided by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Table A2 in front of you provides a summary on net new units for approved entitlements, building permits issued, and final permits or certificate of occupancy for 2019. So for approved entitlements, these are a net increase. We had 78 low-income units from the Newport Crossings project, and 363 above moderate income units. And the, for building permits issued, we had two very low-income and one low-income accessory dwelling unit, and 23 above moderate income. And then for certificate of occupancy issued or building permits final, we had 91 very low-income units from the Uptown Newport project, and 171 units comprised of Lido Villas and Uptown Newport. Table B provides a summary of the regional housing needs allocation progress, and this is for the entire planning period to date. It highlights 2019, and it shows the number of units provided based on income level. And again, this is a net increase in permitted units. And some more highlights for housing element implementation, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which also was a priority for land use decision-making this year. We had two changes in state law, and we are currently working on the latest update to the ordinance, which I believe you guys saw at the last meeting. And to date, we have 16 applied for 11 which are permitted and three final. Also, the senior housing assistance repair program is ongoing, and to date, we have spent $243,466 on 11 projects. And Uptown Newport, we saw 227 units final in 2019, including the 91 affordable units, and leasing of all those units is underway. And then the Newport Crossings mixed-use project. And that concludes my presentation. The next step is to forward this on to city council, and then it will be turned in to the state by April 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. I'll get you guys awake here. Tell me more about SHARP. That's one acronym I don't know much about. Senior Housing.
Oh, that's the Senior Housing Repair Program. That was allocated funds from the Affordable Housing in Lufi Fund. Was allocated $600,000, and the seniors go through a process with Oasis to qualify, and low-income seniors that are in need of home repair, and if they qualify, Habitat for Humanity goes out and makes the repairs.
And how do we promote that? I mean, it's interesting.
It's on our website, and Oasis handles the promotion.
All right, so do we, is that active, or is it kind of slow-going?
It's active, but it has been slower qualifying applicants recently.
Very good. Commissioners, questions? Yes?
I'm curious. You noted in 2019, it looks like it was two major projects, the Newport Crossings and Uptown Newport, that satisfied a lot of the RENA numbers. I'm just curious, moving forward into this year and the years beyond, if, what other large projects are on the horizon?
That's a good question. The biggest project that the commission's going to be seeing here in, potentially as early as next month, is the, what we call the Newport Airport Village Project. It's a project in the airport area, fairly near the Newport Crossings project. Again, this is a pending application that you'll see in the future. If my memory serves, it's going to be 329 units. It's fairly close to the airport, and it will be coming forward, as I said, maybe with a study session at the next month, and I'll highlight that in my director's report later this evening. That's probably the largest single project that we're going to see within the next year, and we are reviewing a couple of other projects that include housing. EIRs are under preparation. We probably won't see those probably till early 2020.
Very good.
Did you say that this?
Commissioner Kleinman?
Thank you. Did you say that the steering committee was dissolved in another, what is the distinction between those two committees, and who is our current committee made up of?
Certainly, it's a good question. The general plan update process, as you know, has been guided by the General Plan Update Steering Committee, and I think as the council refocused their efforts strictly to housing and other elements necessary to support the RENA allocation, it was thought that we needed to maybe change the focus of that committee. We were about ready to get into a general plan advisory committee, and we wanted to have a larger committee, and so the thought would be to kind of change it into the general plan advisory committee, and so that's what really happened. So the steering committee had kind of run its course and done its job, and so now we have a new committee. It's a slightly larger committee. There's nine residents on the committee. It's chaired by Larry Tucker, and the mayor, Mayor O'Neill, is a non-voting 10th member of the committee. As Melinda indicated, the first meeting is starting on March 25 of this year, in this chamber, 6:00 p.m. That committee will then be the, in essence, a policy committee to help guide the community, give staff and the consultants policy direction. I think one of the key components that they're going to be looking for is to try to find the housing opportunity sites that would be consistent with state law, that we would include in our housing element. So that's going to be our next advisory committee, the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee. Not a very good acronym, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Lowery?
I just have a question, a little bit in reference to kind of our RENA numbers, and I know in 2019, what we had, this number stated in 2019 versus what we have in 2020, and those requirements are, I don't say up in the air, but I know that there's some back and forth in terms of what city council wants to do. But just out of curiosity, things that are in the pipeline now, or say in 2019, do those apply against our RENA numbers coming up in, say, 2020 and 21, or is there like a definite cutoff date where basically, you know, anything in the pipeline starting, you know, 112020, that's what starts to satisfy this new number? Or is it things in the pipeline, maybe that was from 2019, or such as a time like that?
Certainly. The planning cycle that we're within actually goes out through and includes 2021. So our new housing element gets turned in in October of '21 for the next eight-year planning cycle. So projects that are constructed and permitted and occupied before the new housing element cycle, which really starts in earnest in January 2022, they would be reflected in future columns in these tables here that would be production related to, and whether or not it satisfies our current RENA of five. Now, going forward, whether a project might, you know, we're entitled now, would it be, you know, a housing opportunity site in the upcoming cycle? You know, a lot of that has to do with the timing of when those projects get entitled and/or potentially constructed. You know, I think if we can take credit for those construction in the next planning cycle, they would count towards satisfying that future RENA. Again, we do have a fairly high RENA, 2832. I can report to the commission that the Regional Council of SCAG today adopted the current existing RENA methodology, so that 4832 number that we've been talking about and talking to the community about in a variety of different forums is really the solid number that we have today. And now what happens is the appeal process begins. The city council has directed staff and authorized us to prepare an appeal on behalf of the community of that 4832, and we'll see how that goes through the spring and summer. We'll have a final resolution of all the appeal processes in October of this year, I believe it's, I believe it's October, and then we'll know what our final, final RENA number is. But at this point in time, we're planning to go forward with trying to find sites to accommodate 42, 4832 units.
So really, we're still, is still a little bit of gray area in terms of that number starts to meet at final map or final entitlement, or versus, say, start of construction in terms of satisfying those numbers? Just, I'm just trying to get an idea of when you kind of start chipping away at these numbers, if it starts now, or, it sounds like we still have a little ways to really get kind of credit of things that are going to move forward.
Yeah. What I want to try to make a distinction to kind of hopefully answer your question, give a little guidance here, is that, you know, the RENA is something that we have to plan for. We don't have to construct them, but we do report housing starts and entitlements and occupancy in this report to the state so that we know, you know, is our housing production trying to keep up with what they want us to plan for, and that's what the RENA is. So when we look at the 4800, I'm sorry, 4832 number, of which roughly 47% of that is going to be affordable to low and very low-income households, which is a pretty significantly high percentage there, you know, we have to plan for that. We have to find sites to accommodate that number. We have to have policies that would promote affordability. We have to have policies that would promote affordability in all those income categories. So that's what the housing element will be planning for regardless of how we actually achieve construction. So, you know, again, the RENA isn't a, it's not a production goal. The city's not held responsible for actually attaining those numbers. We're just being held responsible to plan for that future growth and construction.
Mr. Wargen?
While we're on the topic of the Newport Crossings, how many units are remaining in the general plan that can be built in that airport area? And as we go into these discussions without a general plan update, once those are exceeded, we couldn't be building any further housing stock there unless we are making changes, correct?
That's indeed correct. What you're alluding to is in the airport area, we have a variety of properties that are zoned mixed-use, which would allow for commercial and/or residential projects. There is a limit to the number, there's a total limit to the number of housing units that can be entitled and built in the airport area, and that's 2,200. That does not include any units that would be authorized through a density bonus provision because those are above and beyond what a general plan would allow. And so we've entitled in the airport area the Uptown Newport Project, and that was 1,244 units, of which 922 are, and that's general plan units. And then the difference there, 322 are density bonus units that don't count towards the 2,200. The other project that we've entitled is the Newport Crossings Project, and that was also a density bonus project. I believe that, I don't know how the numbers directly off the top of my head, I think it was about 281 units were general plan units. And then the difference to 350 were density bonus units. So when you add the two numbers up, you know, you get about 1,200 units, give or take. I'm sorry, my math is not up. I didn't anticipate that specific question. So when you subtract that from the 2,200 unit maximum, we have about 1,000 units left, give or take. I can actually provide a better tally of that if you would like.
So if we hit those numbers before the RENA numbers, we have to readjust our general plan to accommodate someplace to put those 4,300 or whatever that RENA number is?
Exactly. Now, the housing element process, as guided by the housing, the new committee that I mentioned, will help and guide the community where we're going to put the opportunity sites to find room for 4,800 units. And that could be at a variety of places, whether that be Newport Center or Banning Ranch or any other neighborhood that we might look at. The airport area, I think, is a repository, an area that we might want to be putting some units. And if the number that we anticipate planning going forward exceeds the capacity that we have now, which is roughly about 1,000 units, I expect that we might be going down that road. And you're right, we might have to make an adjustment to the land use element to increase that cap in the airport area.
But the guidance would come out of this new committee-
Yes.
-to then make that changes via Planning Commission, then City Council? Or is that kind of how the process would work?
That is how the process is going to go forward. We are in the business of, right now, hiring a consultant, a housing element consultant to assist us with the process. The Steering Committee is going to guide us through that process. We're going to develop a housing element and it's going to go through a public vetting process with the committee. We have the opportunity to have extensive outreach and we're going to be going to the community and getting a lot of outreach. And at the end of the day, we'll come back to the Planning Commission for review and both committees are going to be making that recommendation to the city council for action at a future date.
Gotcha. So general plans kind of pushed aside. So something like this memo that's in the back of our packet here that's kind of talks about all the laws that have changed since the general plan was updated in 2006, that's helpful somewhat, but then there's other things in the general plan that, or in this new plan for housing that really won't be touched, like bicycles and stuff like that, right? That'll kind of be things that are handled in the general plan that will be down the road, not in this current phase.
Yeah. There will definitely be parts of the general plan update that are going to be handled a little bit differently and maybe delayed a little bit. Bicycles are actually going to be handled in part of the circulation element update. And that actually is part of the refocused effort to the general plan. And I maybe should have elaborated a little bit. This refocused effort to update the general plan is really housing-centric. You know, that's why we call it the Housing Element Update. It's not technically just the housing element. We are actually going to be updating the circulation element almost in its entirety because we want to make sure if we're going to have all these housing units, we want to make sure our circulation, our streets and roadways and bikeways and what have you, or our mobility is also matching that increased density. We're also going to be, so we're going to be changing the land use element to the extent necessary to accommodate these additional sites. And so the scope of work is really the housing element, the land use element for housing, and the circulation element in its entirety to make sure it lines up. And then the other part of it that we're going to be doing is environmental justice policies. That's a new component that's required by state law. When you update two elements of your general plan, you have to then accommodate environmental justice policies. And so we felt it'd be important to put that in right now. And so that's the scope of work of this refocused general plan update. Now, the Diat and Batia memo that you mentioned incorporates other facets that where our general plan is also deficient. And the big one is really the safety element. The state law does now require that we update our safety element to address climate change. And with that comes sea level rise and a whole variety of issues. And that's going to be a big effort for the community. We do know that we have to update the safety element to address that. And so I think, given the deadline of the housing element, which is again is October of 2021, you know, the thought is we can't bite off all of that at once. And so the council is focusing us on housing now and then we're going to be working on the rest of the general plan, kind of in a parallel track. But it'll probably take a little bit longer because again, we've got a priority of housing right now. And we're going to get to the safety element, we're going to get to climate change and adaptation and all the other things that the community might want to add to the general plan in due course of time, but at a slightly delayed. We are going to be working on those efforts behind the scenes, but again, focusing on housing.
And just real quickly on the environmental justice, that's for later or is that for now?
It's for now.
And will they be discussing environmental justice related to John Wayne Airport in that discussion?
That's a very interesting aspect of it. I think when you look and delve into what the state law requires for environmental justice, it's really talking to what they're calling disadvantaged areas. And they're identified by the state of California and they're mapped. And we do have one very small disadvantaged area designated by, again, by the state. And it's an industrial property up next to Costa Mesa. And so in my mind, we need to address environmental justice as it relates to that particular neighborhood. And that would be the minimum requirement that the state would require us to do. And it wouldn't necessarily address John Wayne. But that being said, you know, those policies can address environmental justice in a variety of ways as long as it meets the state requirements. And I think it can address other issues related to, you know, noise or other environmental constraints that we might have in the community. Again, that's going to be a process that we're going to have to go through, you know, with our consultants and our legal assistants and the community. It'll be a dialogue that the general plan update, I'm sorry, the Housing Element Update Committee will be going forward with.
Cool. Thanks, Jim. Very educated on it. I appreciate you updating us on a lot of that.
I'm going to back up for a few questions from the chair. Tell us where we are with the Cole Residential. And I assume if, when that's revised, that'll come back in. Well, yeah, the Cole, it was called the Cole Residential deal, the Shopoff thing.
Certainly. You know, that is a pending application now. It is going to be changed. And all I will say is it will be modified, but it is coming back. We do have a preliminary application that we're reviewing right now for PRCERN. And PRCERN is the group of folks who have partnered with Shopoff, who have built the two apartment buildings in the Uptown Newport Project right along Jamboree Road. So those folks are going to be coming back with a revised project. I don't have any plans on file yet. I have a preliminary application, but I don't even have any plans yet. But that will be a pending application. It'll go through its environmental review. It probably won't be coming back to the commission for about a year from now.
But that will be in the queue for numbers?
Yes.
Could be.
It will be in the queue. I do anticipate being able to account for the density that they propose in our housing element update as a housing opportunity site. It, you know, depending upon the timing of these events, and we'll have to consult with HCD on that, but I'd like to keep that into the housing element going forward to kind of help us accommodate that 4,232 unit requirement.
And then Fashion Island area, how many units are left? Could be.
None.
Done?
There are no available units in the Newport Center statistical area. And Fashion Island is not, does not even accommodate residential at all. It's just commercial.
What about the car wash?
We do have a pending application for the car wash site at 150 Newport Center Drive. I believe it is 27 or 28 units, same applicant, Mr. Ridgway. It is a pending application. It'll come forward to the commission probably later this summer.
All right. And give us what you know of Banning Ranch. We've all read about land donation of money. Is that an opportunity for us to use that in the 4832?
We hope that it is. The Banning Ranch site currently is in our housing element as an opportunity site. It is non-vacant, by the way. It doesn't meet the criteria of a vacant site because there is active oil fields there. So despite the open nature of it, it is not considered vacant. We will not, according to the current definitions of what these housing opportunity sites are based on state law, it is our belief that we cannot reuse that site in our current housing element going forward. That site has 1,375 units allocated to it, which is our current general plan. You know, we won't be able to reuse that site unless we have substantial evidence that it actually can be developed for housing within the next planning cycle. I believe we have a willing property owner. That being said, they are also negotiating with a variety of parties to publicly acquire the property and keep it for as conservation and open space. I'm hopeful that we can use a portion of that property for housing going forward. Again, through the Housing Element Update Committee, you know, we're going to be searching out sites and Banning Ranch is definitely an opportunity. I'd like to see 1,375 units out there. I know there's others in the community who might not want to see that. But, you know, we have to do our very best to come up with a housing element, a plan that accommodates those units. And 4,832 units is quite a large number for this community. You know, it's well over 10% of our, it's not well over, it's probably 11 or 12% of our existing housing stock. And to expect that to be, well, we obviously have to plan for it, but expect it to be built in the next year, eight years is probably a bridge too far. But, you know, 1,375 units at Banning Ranch, I'd like to see an opportunity to get all of that or a portion, a good portion of that there, or potentially even more. So whether that's a good idea or not is going to be something that the committee's going to be looking at and that the community's going to have an ample opportunity to weigh in on.
Very good. Any final questions? Seeing none, staff, you're looking for a recommendation action?
Looking for it to be for, oh, do you want?
I'm sorry. I interrupted Melinda there. We are looking for public comments here before we go any further.
We will.
Because this is on the agenda. But we are asking the commission to forward this to the city council for their review and then eventual authorization to submit it to OPR and State Housing Community Development.
Thank you. With that, we'll open up to comments from the three people in the audience. Mr. Mosher.
Chair Kettin, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I believe the city's early general plans were written with an understanding that a general plan is a document that describes a community's vision of what their city will look at, look like, at what was then called its ultimate build-out. That was going to be the final state of the city. That apparently was a naive view and Sacramento now does not see any possibility of ultimate build-out. There's always an opportunity, apparently, to stuff more into the package and that apparently is what we're being asked to do. These comments may be more for the new committee than for you immediately, but they are related to this item. In calculating the RENA numbers, they seem to be based on estimates of how many housing units actually exist in the city and how many of those are occupied, which are numbers that come not from the agencies that this report goes to, but from a state agency called the Department of Finance. The new format of this report seems to, and so that agency, the Department of Finance, keeps track of that numbers, how many housing units actually are actively existing in each city. This report seems to report everything other than that. So in the table A2 that we have on handwritten page 14, it's telling us that there were 262 new certificates of occupancy in the last year. However, anybody that goes to zoning administrator meetings knows that when we approve something new, there's often something old that was demolished. So those new occupancies may just be replacing what was something that was already there. And in many cases, more are demolished than are actually being built. So I'm wondering if we know how many active occupied locations we currently have and how much that changed by in 2019. I'm guessing the Department of Finance is going to say that's considerably lower number than the 262. I'm also curious, on handwritten page 53, it says that we did a, or the staff did a survey of vacant land that is in or within three miles of the coastal zone and found it was less than 50 acres of privately-owned vacant land. I'm wondering what the result was. How much less than 50 was it? Do we have any privately-owned vacant land? And as to Banning Ranch, the commission should understand, or at least my understanding, is that in assigning the 4,832 units to Newport Beach, Banning Ranch was not part of that calculation because technically and in reality, it is unincorporated county land. So any housing that the SCAG thought should be assigned to it would have been assigned to Orange County. So we may have a problem if we wanted to take credit for it. We will have an even bigger assignment if that is included in ours. And-
You can go on.
And then I am curious, which is not exactly mentioned in the report here, and I'm sure the new committee will be curious about this. Much of our city is zoned for more housing than is actually on it. For instance, almost all of Corona del Mar is zoned R2 for duplexes. Many of the locations only have a single-family home on them. Similar situations exist elsewhere. Does the city know how much we currently have zoned for that has not been developed? And can any of that be taken as credit for potential new use even though it has not been used for that in the past? And then final kind of trivial comment to the Diat and Batia report. In writing, I mentioned one of the bills in there about surplus land seemed to be the wrong one. It's on handwritten page 81. I think the bill that they're talking, it said there's new requirements for the city to report city-owned surplus land. I think the bill that they were trying to cite, signed on October 9th, was Senate Bill 6, SB 6, which I believe is telling the city it needs to update its site inventory and report that, not surplus land, but the entire residential site opportunities every year and report that. And I'm wondering if the city does that because the report here mentions we have the site survey available on the city website. When you find that on the city website, it's just pointing to the 2013 housing element where it identified residential opportunity sites. And it doesn't, there's no indication it's been updated at all since 2013. The new bill apparently requires that to be updated and reported annually, if I'm understanding it. And that's called SB 6. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, David Tanner. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to comment on the report. After reviewing the report, I'm concerned about the impression the state will have regarding the status of the city's general plan and housing element. I want to urge this commission to revise the report prior to the commission's final action to provide a clear understanding of the status of the general plan and the challenges faced by the city in updating the general plan. A message consistent with the position expressed by the city council. I recommend the report emphasize the cumulative effects of changes in circumstances, the changes in circumstances have had and are having on the city's general plan and the update process. In 2019, changes in circumstances included housing- In 2019, changes in circumstances included housing stimulus and affordability laws, draft RENA allocation, wildland urban fire threats, public safety power shut-offs, forecasted earthquake risk and damage modeling, and disadvantaged communities. The effect on the general plan update process needs to be emphasized, I believe, in this updated report. The cumulative effects of these changes in circumstances should be made painfully clear to the state. State housing stimulus and affordability laws have rendered the general plan, portions of the municipal code, and some of the city's operational procedures inconsistent with state law. Just read your attachment too, the diagnostic memo, it clearly states that. As a result of the city's efforts to update the housing element, we abruptly, we were abruptly halted and remain so. And as the city strives to find a way to comply while at the same time protect the public health and safety and welfare, the city has found no feasible way to accommodate current state housing and affordability law, the draft RENA allocation, or prepare the housing element update within the mandated timeframe. The city has requested an extension of time from the State Department of Housing and Community Development to complete the housing element update, which, based on current housing and affordability law and RENA allocations, will require a comprehensive update to all elements of the general plan. The updated general plan was subject to, is subject to vote or approval, which under the circumstances is highly unlikely. The updated general plan is subject to approval of the California Coastal Commission, which in recent years has denied a major residential project within the coastal zone, Banning Ranch. State actions have resulted in significant expenditures of city resources, city resources that have and will continue to be diverted from other important municipal affairs. This should be the overwhelming message sent to the state in this report. So I also think that the report is, there's too much fluff in it. If it is limited to what's going on in the year 2019, it's going to be about quarter the size. The more bulk, the more muddy it costs the city, it's only going to get bigger, just like environmental impact reports, which, by the way, have to address the entirety of the project. So for the general plan, you can't just do one element and then move on, which was the inference that Mr. Campbell provided. So it's going to be the whole general plan and all the elements, which have to be internally consistent and have equal bearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kanner. Seeing no other speakers coming up, we'll close this portion of the discussion and move on to the commissioners' comments to staff on these things.
Chair, could we give staff an opportunity to respond to some of that?
Yeah, I'm just going to go to that. Mr. Mosher brought up some very interesting comments on the general plan vision and the build-out, ultimate build-out, Banning Ranch county land overlay, that's a new one. And proceeding down to Mr. Kanner's comments. Please.
All right, Mr. Chair, I will do my best to kind of go over some of the highlights there. And I think Mr. Mosher's comments about the vision and what the general plan is and the state wanted to stuff more in there, I think it was just a general comment there. Clearly, the state wants all communities in the state of California to do more in terms of housing. Again, they've declared a housing crisis. They have applied it to charter cities, and so we're going to do our very best to comply. And that's really the business of the Housing Element Update Committee. You know, Mr. Mosher does bring up an interesting point about Banning Ranch. It is in county territory. I did review the county's housing element and they've got a housing opportunity site there on several parcels. I don't see those as being, you know, mutually exclusive either, but you know, the county has allowed the city to do the planning for this based upon the notion that the city's going to annex it because it is in our sphere of influence. So I think we're going to have to sit down and talk to the county and see what they expect to see and take credit for there. I think Mr. Mosher's incorrect in that what SCAG has done with the RENA is, is they've really kind of ignored all of the local input that the cities and counties have put into this process. You know, we got 1.3 million, which has, doesn't reflect local input at all. And so in that respect, you know, whether or not Banning Ranch is in one jurisdiction or the other is kind of irrelevant to how the RENA process went forward. And, you know, in terms of identifying sites, you know, we have to meet the number that has been granted or been handed to us. You know, both the county and the city did put housing units in Banning Ranch to help satisfy the current past RENA cycle. And I anticipate both the county and the city wanting to do the same in the future. So we're going to have to sit down and discuss that with the county as we go forward. Mr. Mosher mentioned a survey of vacant land. What we did with that most recently is the Mellow Act, which is a piece of the government code which requires the replacement of low, moderate income houses in the coastal zone that might be lost. It applies to communities, but when communities are completely built out and has less than 50 vacant acres of land, then it doesn't apply. And so we went through that process and we could not find 50 acres of vacant and available land within the community. And we made that determination this last year, and so the Mellow Act does not apply at this point. I think it's kind of a moot point at this point because we really can't, now with SB 330 in place, we can't actually reduce density on an individual lot basis at this point in time. Yeah, Mr. Mosher does bring up an interesting point about trying to get credit for latent development potential in our neighborhoods. You know, he's right to point out that we have on Babo Island, it's basically R2 zoning. You can have two units on every property, but not a lot of properties have two units on it. And so that latent development potential, we actually know what that is and it can be calculated, whether that be on the peninsula or in Corona del Mar or in any of the neighborhoods that are R2. You know, can we get credit for that as if, you know, people are going to tear down the house and build a duplex on that? You know, that's a very interesting question. We will examine that. And as it relates to his comment about SB 6, you know, what we'll do is we'll make sure that going forward, you know, we are consistent with that. I'm not familiar with SB 6 off the top of my head, so I really can't comment further. Moving on to Mr. Tanner's comments, revising the report, sending the state a message and how it derailed our general plan update process. I think that's interesting. I don't think the state cares, to be perfectly honest. That is my opinion. But this report is really looking back to 2019 and really isn't looking forward. It is, it is looking at the 2019 progress towards implementing the existing general plan. I think the information that we're providing in here about how we're going through a general plan update process is, I think it's important for the public to understand and even the state, because, you know, we have looked at the guidelines and looked at the state law. We have seen some deficiencies in our current general plan and that we're working towards rectifying that. But again, I think in deference to his comments, you know, again, this is a report looking at what's happened and transpired in 2019. We'll do this report again in 2020 and we'll report progress going forward. But I don't think that this is really the report to send the state a message of the city's discontent with losing control over housing policy. I think that's really left at this point to the city council, that through their housing action plan and the efforts that they're going forward and we're assisting them with and seeking additional state legislation to clarify language. You know, again, we're pushing back on all these. We are going to be filing an appeal of the RENA number. But again, I don't think that, that's not the requirement for this report and it may not be the right place for it. That's my comments on that. So I hope I got everything. I may not have had it all, but there you have it.
Very good. Your notes and mine were pretty complicit. Questions, commissioners to staff? Hearing none, let's proceed on to make a recommendation, to move this along to the city council. That's what you're requesting, I believe?
Chair, we have three items here on the recommended action and we would request that the motion just indicate to take staff's recommended action and that would be the simple motion to make and if, we'll go from there.
There you go. Motions, discussions, proceedings? I'll make a motion to proceed this, move this along to city council on items one, two, and three on the annual general plan progress report, PA 2007-125, citywide.
I'll second that.
And include, I should have said include comments from the two audience participants and staff's comments about that, that they're going to take that in consideration. Add that to that. Would the second agree?
Yeah, I'll agree.
Very good. Very good.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, participants. Good comments. All right, we're in staff and commissioner items, motions for reconsiderations. Hearing none, moving right along. Community Development's Director's Report.
Mr. Chair, I'll try and keep this brief. We have, I'm just going to update a couple of items here for the commission. On March 9th, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we have a community meeting on residential design standards. I've got the flyer here. I may have to hand it out, but I can obviously get more information on that and that's next Monday, March 9th at 6:00 PM in the Civic Center Community Room right across the way here. Be discussing revision, potential revisions to the residential design standards related to third floors, clarification of how we measure lowest floor area, and how we deal with open space standards for a single unit and two-unit dwellings in the RM zones. So that's a community meeting for a proposed amendment that council's directed us to do. That will come back before the commission at a later date for a hearing. March 10th, as indicated by Mr. Mosher, we have the accessory dwelling unit ordinance going to the city council for its first public hearing. And I'm pleased to hear that Mr. Mosher is, likes the new chart that we put in there of comparing our ordinance to what state law provides. And I think that is a meaningful addition to that report. On March 19th, we've got a planning commission meeting. We have three public hearings. They're fairly routine, small restaurants, and you've got the upcoming agenda in your packet there. I'm sorry, the tentative meeting schedule coming up, if you'd like to see what those items are. On March 24th, we have a city council hearing. The item of note there, we've got the appeal for the 215 Riverside Avenue office parking structure coming back finally to the March 24th meeting. Planning Commission saw that back in October. On March 25th, we have our first housing element update advisory committee. It'll be in the chambers here at 6:00 PM. As indicated, Mr. Larry Chucker is the chair and Mayor O'Neill will be also sitting on that. And so we'll be starting this process in earnest with their very first meeting on March 24, I'm sorry, March 25th. That is a Wednesday night. April 9th, we don't have any items scheduled for April 9th for the planning commission here, you know, barring significant changes that we will likely cancel that meeting. Then my last update is April 23rd for the planning commission. We do have two public hearings scheduled for that night. And we also anticipate the study session for the project that I mentioned, that Newport Airport Village project up in the airport area. And that is a fairly large planned community and housing project, which does include affordable housing. So that would be a general plan amendment, but that'll just be a study session, just to get you all familiar with what that project is. And with that, that's all I have for you.
You said on April 9th, we have a blank agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, we may want to cancel that meeting because Commissioner Elmore's wife's going to have their first child on the 8th or 9th, what's a day? We may have to cancel the meeting or we'll go to Hogue and have it there. All right. Thank you for that and...
Chair, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure. Dive in.
I was hoping for an update on a couple of things, including, you know, my favorite topic, the cell site, small cell site progress.
Small cell site progress. Are you referring to a specific small cell site or in general, small cell?
Not just CDM, citywide. Well, I know that some of the carriers were in discussions on those agreements with the city and I thought that there was at least one that was moving forward with actually...
You're correct in that the city has entered into license agreements with some of the carriers, principally AT&amp;T and Verizon at this moment. And that really establishes the business relationship for the use of the city's streetlights. And so that's a separate issue that's already been addressed. So each of those individual locations comes forward with a minor use permit for a particular location. We do have several pending right now. I don't want to get into any of those particular issues because those are public hearings. They're going to come forward to the zoning administrator in the coming weeks. We're going to start to see some of those. In fact, you might see them on the agenda here for the zoning administrator. You've got a couple of them coming down. And so the zoning administrator will take actions on those applications. Those might be subject to review, so they might be coming to you if they were appealed. So, you know, I don't think we want to get into any of those cases at this point.
No, I was just mostly looking to hear whether we had made progress. So I'm really glad to hear that we have...
Some of them are coming, yes.
Yes, that's great. One, actually two more. I wanted to hear from Tony about traffic. I think we had talked about the state mandated changes on the pedestrian lighting timing and I know you mentioned you were working through some of those kinks, but I'm sure we are all aware that PCH traffic did not lighten up after the summer season was over. And I'm just curious if that's just a numbers issue or if we're going to see some relief?
No, actually, we've completed a project where we've done a lot of upgrades to signal equipment through coast highway. And as part of that, then there's changes to the signal timing that go as part of that project. So we're monitoring the changes. So we always make adjustments as we monitor traffic and with the updated signal timing. And part of that, again, is like you said, there's state law that changed the amount of time that we have to provide for pedestrians crossing. And it makes it so that there's more time required for the pedestrians. So we have to factor that into the signal timing. But it's a progress issue and we are monitoring the recent changes we made.
So it sounds like we're stuck with what we've got on PCH. No relief coming?
No, no, not at all. I won't say that. We do make adjustments to the timing. We do monitor the new timing changes. So, you know, as, to the extent that we can improve the flow with the current capacity, the number of lanes, then we always work on that.
Okay, thank you. Final question, and this was just mostly my curiosity. What is going on at Crystal Cove Shopping Center with all the changes there?
Well, the, from what I understand, the Irvine Company, it does this periodically. They reinvest back into their properties. They're basically redesigning the parking lot, and if that's what you're referring to. And my guess is when you're done, you're not going to know what the difference was. But the Irvine Company felt it was important. There may be other reasons why they're doing it, I'm just not familiar with. Sometimes it's drainage, sometimes it's drains, sometimes they got to, they got to replace the sewer line or something. But there probably be upgrades in landscaping as well. But at the end of the day, you're going to see a parking lot that looks surprisingly similar to the one that they took out.
Sounds like the parking lot over here at the Bristol Shopping Center. That all that work, all that misery, and it looks the same.
It does look the same to my eye and I go see it probably three times a week.
But we're glad that they do that. All right.
I have one, Mr. Chair. A short agenda always calls for a longer meeting. But I wanted to pick on Tony as well and maybe ask some questions related to the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Ensign's banana lot parking that we're hearing a lot of discussion on. I've had multiple people contact me on this particular issue and just any idea the school district's needs. I know it's a different district. It's not, you know, a full purview of the city, but a lot of cars are going to be going on the road here. That's going to have an impact. And any idea that what the school district's need is to have that banana lot, is what they're calling it, on cliff, which apparently will take out 27 trees that kind of mask the view of Ensign's appearance. So those are slated potentially for removal. And I believe that some might be on the setbacks that are on city property. So just kind of curious on your take there and if there's been any traffic study by either the city or the school district related to this banana lot that they're calling it. And it could appear to make more congestion around that surrounding area. And I know that safety was kind of the discussion, but I haven't really seen any safety issues in that vicinity or in Ensign for some time. And then I guess my other questions would be related to communication. Does the city have a dedicated staff person that works with Newport Mesa Unified School District regularly to discuss issues that have mutual interest between residents and the school students and how they kind of interface when it comes to traffic studies or the circulation in that area? So, you know, they're wanting to do this new parking lot, but does that, this is in a school where kids drive to. This is where parents are strictly dropping off. a school where kids drive to, this is where parents are strictly dropping off. So, you know, I'd like to know if the city's kind of studying their ideas and how it will relate to the city. And I guess the city maybe, and that was you involved, Tony, that stopped their progress. They were putting up new fencing and they didn't have actual permits to install the fencing or at least use the roadways to do that and that seems to have stopped. It seems like there's just temporary fencing there, so maybe you can give an update.
Right, Chair, Wagon, it sounds like we have a lot of questions with respect to this item, so it may be beneficial to have it as an agenda item.
My only concern is that they have a public meeting for Newport Mesa on the 16th, so that's prior to us having our next meeting.
Okay, yeah, so if we can just get a very brief summary and then to the extent that any additional communications need to be provided to the planning commission, then we can certainly ask that...
Mostly then, I guess, would be traffic, how that relates to, and maybe I can draft something up that I can forward, but it's timely, I want to make sure that it gets addressed.
That's for killing time and asking questions. Somebody give me a quick answer, the CDM sports field, is that just going to be rebuilt the way it was or are they doing something different there?
No, they're building, they're expanding and building, you know, more seating, lighting...
Oh, they're going to put seats?
Oh, yeah. They're going to put some seating in, they're going to make it their home stadium for their football team. It's not going to be like Davidson over at Newport Harbor, it's not going to be a big stadium. And there's lighting and there's practice fields that are being built on campus, so that's the CDM.
Was that a public hearing at all?
Yes.
See, that's what I mean.
And that's where, and again, the school district's different in terms of a public hearing.
I know, they can do what they want.
Yeah, that's what I mean, is there somebody on staff that communicates that so the public, like Commissioner Kettin didn't know?
Right. We don't have a dedicated staff member per se, but there are different departments that get involved in the projects as they come through. In the case of CDM High School, they had an EIR as part of that project. The Ensign did not have that extent of like EIR review.
Communication was terrible.
Right. But we were involved at least in reviewing the plans as they were coming through and we still are right now. So it's, we're having constant contact with Ensign and with the school district.
Oh, that's great.
As we're going on, I've got multiple emails coming into me regularly, so.
Yeah.
So it's, we are definitely communicating with them regularly as their project started.
And in your opinion, the 16th meeting, is that kind of, you know, a way to just inform finally the residents what they're planning to do? Or is there, like, does the city have any means to stop any future progress on that until you guys confer and you come back and say this meets our standards?
No, their meeting on the 16th is an outreach meeting for the school district to inform the community of the project itself and what they're doing and why they're building it and that's what their meeting is.
Very good, thank you, Tony.
We'll be in attendance, but that's the extent.
Last item, we request for excused absences. Lauren? None? Anybody? All right, good.
That depends, are we canceling April 8th or 9th?
Which weekend?
Isn't that Easter week, the week of...
I don't know when Easter is anymore.
Yes.
I thought it's right now, all the kids are out now, I thought. Ski week.
That was ski week.
All right. I don't hear of any, if you do...
I actually go to school here in Newport, which is vacation all year.
Very good. That's it, adjournment. Nice meeting.